And it's a presentation on fluoridation. It is anticipated, though, a committee report would come out from this regarding the referral, which would be passed in unfinished business next week on December 3rd. And I'll propose that committee report at the end of -- committee of the whole, if appropriate. Couple of things on this. First of all, I'd like to ask the council's indulgence, because of the tight timing on this, is that we save questions for the end, so not to interrupt the presentations. We have about 15 minutes of deliberation at the end of the committee of the whole, and that that would be appropriate for the questions. Also then, for the two sides, it has been explained to them, but I'll just reiterate it here, that each side will have 15 minutes, which will be strictly enforced. And we're also then using our timer located next to Madam Clerk. When it flashes yellow, that means there is one minute remaining, and when it flashes red, that means time is up, and I will end the presentation at that point. We have Lise as our master of ceremonies, so I'll turn it over to you, Lise. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Lise Hornsby, Utility Systems Director. We're going to talk about fluoridation of the city's water supply this evening. I have some history and some introduction information, and I'll try to go through this fairly quickly. The presentation format, first, a history of fluoridation, that I will give. Then we have the regulatory position by Richard Pedler, who works for the Washington State Department of Health, Office of Drinking Water. We have the anti-fluoridation position, Dr. Bill Osmondson. We have the pro-fluoridation position being presented by Dr. Moffett Burgess, and also a short piece being shared by Dr. Peyton Gaunt. And then we will have, if we have time, we'll have some questions and answers after that. History of fluoridation in Renton. In 1984, the council was approached by a committee called Renton Citizens for Better Dental Health. They convinced the council to put out an advisory vote on fluoridation in 1985. That was, the majority of people voted in favor of fluoridation, and the council decided to actually add fluoridation to the water. We built the fluoridation facilities in 1986, and in October of 1987, we began fluoridating the water. Local fluoridated supplies, basically all around the city of Renton, city of Seattle, of course, all of the Seattle purveyors using their water, that's all of the water districts, Cedar River, Seuss Creek, Water District 90, Cold Creek, Skyway, Taquilla, Sammamish Plateau in Bellevue, city of Tacoma, and city of Kent. And then there are three local non-fluoridated supplies, Auburn, Federway, and northeast Sammamish. The fluoridation process we use in city of Renton, we use sodium fluoride. We have a bag loader, goes into a saturator tank. We take that solution off of the saturator tank, it goes into a day tank, and we use that to meter in the flowing water at a concentration of .8 milligrams per liter, and then we monitor that. The cost of fluoride for the city of Renton, we use about 10,000 pounds of sodium fluoride every three months, at a cost of about $40,000 a year. The testing, about $18,000. Labor, $15,000, and supplies and parts for $10,000. So we estimate $80,000 to $85,000 per year. If we put that against a population of 94,000, it's about 90 cents per person per year. You can remove fluoride from your drinking water at home. There are three ways, reverse osmosis and activated alumina filters, and distillation, although that's not recommended for a home use. The cost of that, it's not too bad. The filters run between $200 and $500, and depending on which ones you use, operation and maintenance of those filters can run between $100 and $150 every two to five years. The authority for adding fluoride rests solely with the city council. The citizen initiative process does not cover fluoridation of drinking water, and any public vote is advisory only. So the city council has sole authority to add fluoride. And that's my quick presentation. I'll have Richard Pedler come up and give the formal regulatory position.
Members of the city council, my name is Richard Pedler, P is in Paul, E D, L A R. I am the State of Washington Department of Health, Office of Drinking Waters, Fluoridation Program Manager. I'm here tonight at your request to explain a little bit about the drinking water fluoridation program, but I'd like to start from a statement from the Department of Health on fluoride. Hopefully you have received this in your package ahead of time. This is from Maxine Hayes, the state health officer. Evidence shows that water fluoridation is the most cost-effective, practical, and safe means for reducing tooth decay. People who drink fluoridated water at recommended levels retain healthier teeth and have less tooth decay than those without access to fluoridated water. Public health provides prevention measures to all citizens regardless of age, race, gender, or income. Community water fluoridation is the most effective way to deliver the benefits of fluoride to everyone. The Department of Health supports water fluoridation as a sound, population-based, public health measure. The department supports communities in their effort to maintain and fluoridate community water systems. Now, with that being said, I want to let you know that there is no state or county law that requires public drinking water systems to add fluoride. It is only after the fact, when a water system does decide to practice the addition of fluoride, that the Department of Health steps in to oversee the operation using WAC 246, 290, 460. The first system to fluoridate in the U.S. was Grand Rapids, Michigan, back in 1945. Here in Washington, the first approval for fluoride went to the town of Forks, but the first operating system goes to the city of Furcrest in 1955. Currently, the fluoridation program oversees the 52 systems practicing fluoridation. They range in size from the city of Seattle down to the smallest system, Rockaway Beach, serving 190 customers. These systems, which include the city of Renton, serve directly a population of roughly 2.1 million people. In addition, these systems serve exclusively an additional 1 million people, for a total of 3.1 million, through inertied pipelines by way of another 104 systems. An example is the city of Seattle practices fluoridation. The city of Bellevue has no other source than the city of Seattle. Therefore, even though Bellevue doesn't practice fluoridation, the population there does receive optimally fluoridated drinking water. The fluoridation program requires water systems who fluoridate to record on monthly operational reports, which we call MORs, daily readings of fluoride levels. These MORs are then sent to headquarters to be reviewed for compliance. Also a requirement is for these same systems, on one day out of the month, to collect what is called a split sample. The split sample is divided in half. The operator records the reading for that day. This is written on the lab slip, and is sent with the second half of the sample to a state certified drinking water laboratory. The labs run the samples and send both sets of results back to the fluoride program for review. This review compares the results to ensure the equipment used by the water system is within 3, 0.3 milligrams of what the state certified laboratory is. This way, we're not getting different plain apples and oranges. In reviewing the records, it seems the city of Renton has started fluoridation approximately 1987. They currently serve a residential population of 62,000 people, and along with the city of Seattle, also provide water through inerties to Skyway Water District as well. The water system has historically provided timely reports to us, and for the most part have operated within the range dictated by the WAC of 0.8 to 1.3 milligrams per liter. I will be around later for questions.
Nice to be with you this evening. I'm Dr. Bill Osmondson. I'm a dentist. I've been practicing for 35 years, and I have my master's in public health. I am also president of the Washington Action for Safe Water. We have some of the board members here. Dr. David Johns, physician from Mercer Islands here. Dr. Todd Lawson is also here, dentist resident in Renton. For about 25 years, I promoted water fluoridation. I thought it was safe and effective. I was told that it was, and I just didn't look at the research. When I had a little bit more time, I have two son-in-laws who are dentists, and when I had a little more time, I said, okay, well, let's look at some of the problems in dentistry, and I did. One of them was fluoride. And I found that the science is absolutely convincing, that fluoridation is not safe, it's not effective, it's not approved, and it lacks freedom of choice. And when I say it's not safe, it's especially not safe for sub-populations, such as blacks, Hispanics, children, fetuses, boys, diabetics, athletes, those who are doing lots of physical work, because you don't control the dosage. Some people drink a lot of water, some people don't. Some people's kidneys are good, some people are not. There are many different variations there. It's not effective when you're looking at populations. I don't know that I'll have time to go into all these in 15 minutes, but we will cover some of it. It's not approved. Not approved is the most critical point to remember. All the rest of the information that is provided to you this evening supports the urgency of getting FDA Center for Drug Evaluation and Research approval. Congress has charged the FDA CDR with evaluating the science, making the judgment of whether a substance marketed with the intent to prevent disease is actually safe and effective, whether the dosage is correct, the labeling, the warnings, et cetera. We can discuss and debate, but it's the FDA CDR which weighs the evidence and is charged by Congress to make that judgment. That's not your job to have to do that, fortunately. Let me give you an illustration. Suppose you wanted to build a building, like a library, and suppose you got all these plans that were wonderful, and you got them, and you looked at them, and you said, this is wonderful. Well, the city has a job, a building inspector has a job of looking at those plans and ensuring that they are correct as far as all the approvals. The same like the Department of Health. They are like the building inspectors to make sure that everything's written down there correctly. It's not your job to determine how big the footings are supposed to be, or how much rebar is put into that building. Neither is it the building inspector's job to determine that. That needs to be determined by engineers specifically trained to make that judgment of the physics and all the rest of that for the design. The Department of Health, like the building inspector, doesn't look at the safety of whether it is right or not. They don't make the label. That's the FDA CDR's responsibility. I'll get into this more in just a little bit. Let me get on to this next one here. Okay. There we go. Previous slide. We'll get back there. Okay. Under whose DEA license, Drug Enforcement Administration license, do water systems fluoridate the public water? This is what I asked the Department of Health. The Department of Health responded, "The Washington State Department of Health does not dispense fluoride. Rather, the DOH regulates water systems that choose to add fluoride to water. Therefore, DOH does not operate under any DEA license for the dispensing of fluoride." Immediately, the question coming to my mind is, then who is dispensing the fluoridated water? That's the city. And under whose DEA license is fluoridation practiced? King County Dental Officer's license? One of your licenses? Certainly not under mine. It would be illegal for me to do that to everybody writing out a prescription for everybody without them being my patient. As a DOH advised the city that they need to have FDA CDR approval for DEA licensing? No. That's where the Department of Health is grossly negligent. They have not advised you properly that fluoride is a drug, and that you need to have all of these different FDA approvals. I won't spend too much time on that. The FDA CDR has oversight jurisdiction with experts to evaluate the safety and efficacy. Congress defines a drug as an article intended for use, such as in the prevention of disease. Why are you adding fluoride to the water? To prevent disease. Washington Board of Pharmacies confirmed fluoride is a legend drug, a prescription drug. FDA testified to Congress that fluoride is a drug. The EPA scientists, we're switching from FDA to EPA now, the EPA scientists say no to fluoride. What you'll see at the bottom of the page there, 1986, the process by which EPA arrived at the recommended maximum contaminant level, fluoride is a contaminant. For fluoride is scientifically irrational and displays an unprofessional review of relevant scientific data. That's what they presented to the U.S. Court of Appeals, because they were getting fired. You see, if a public health officer who is employed by the government does not, or say what they're supposed to say, they'll lose their job. They can only present certain information to you, and that's what happened. So they're fighting in court to get their jobs back, because, and then in 2001, they said, "In summary, we hold that fluoridation is an unreasonable risk." That is, the toxicity of fluoride is so great, and in Washington, it's defined as a poison, exempt as a pesticide or a drug. And the purported benefits associated with it are so small, that hit me in the gut, if there are any at all, that requiring every man, woman, and child in America to ingest it borders on criminal behavior on the part of governments. These are the EPA scientists speaking through their union. Why has 90% of European governments and dental associations rejected, banned, or stopped fluoridation? They don't find it effective, safe, legal, ethical? This is a good one. They'll talk to you a lot about how we are putting fluoride in the water, but remember, we're not treating water. That's the EPA's role with chlorine and everything. The purpose of adding fluoride is not to make the water safer, it's to treat you and me and my grandchildren, my children in Renton, okay? So let's talk about the tooth, which is most important. This graph shows you that the amount of fluoride, starting at the surface and going clear on into the pulp, and the author says the enamel has more fluoride into the surface, but not much higher statistically. So how much fluoride should a person ingest from all the many different sources available to prevent decay? They won't talk about that, because it doesn't make any difference. You can have a lot of fluoride, a little fluoride, the body only has a certain amount of fluoride in the tooth, so it doesn't make any difference. Now let's look at another one. This one is a great graph, because it talks about water fluoride concentration. At the bottom, low fluoride, going on up to higher fluoride concentrations, and we can see that as we add more fluoride, we get more dental fluorosis. Those are white spots, a sign of toxic excess fluoride ingestion while that tooth was being developed. So we know that the more fluoride you put in the water, the more dental fluorosis you're going to get. And that is the Kere's experience. You could add a little bit of fluoride, or no fluoride, or you could add a lot of fluoride, and your decay rates is going to be about the same. It just doesn't work. We have lots of graphs and lots of studies on this, many, many studies on it. National Research Council in 2006 by the EPA said that it's not protective with calcium fluoride. Okay. Let's look at the graph here. Everything above the black line, the EPA says those people above the black line are getting too much fluoride. Now, in order to make this graph not look so bad, what did they do? Well, they eliminated all the infants. So mom who makes the formula with Renton water is giving a couple hundred times more fluoride than mother's milk. So in order to make it not look so bad, they just eliminated the infants. Then what they did is said, well, you know, some people drink a lot of water, so we're going to throw out 10% of the population, because they don't count, they drink too much water. They know better than that, they shouldn't drink so much water, so we're going to only use the 90th percentile. And then what they said is, well, you know, that still doesn't look so good, so we're going to increase the amount that is safe by 33%. Now, they're looking at what the National Research Council told them, saying, what you have is not safe. So what are they doing? Increasing it by 33% to try to make the graph look half decent. Now, here's the FDA. FDA says, "Do not swallow a quarter milligram of fluoride." That's the same amount of fluoride as what we have in one glass of Renton water. So can you explain to me who I should trust more? The Department of Health, that says, "This is how much fluoride you should put in every glass?" The same amount that the FDA, which is charged by Congress to determine the safety, says, "Don't swallow." That really is a problem for me. How can you be giving me fluoride without my consent at the same amount that the FDA says, "Do not swallow"?
Doctor, you have approximately five minutes.
Thank you. National Research Council unanimous agreement, maximum contaminant level is too high, there are concerns, and you can read them. Freedom, every doctor, researcher, needs to have PARQ SOAP, that's informed consent for freedom. Now, this graph here is only, this chart here, is only to show you that brains are very important. If we compare the low IQ with the high IQ, we find that there's more unemployed, there's more divorced, there are more live in poverty, more incarceration, more chronic welfare, more high school dropout. Choi, 2012, Harvard study. Although fluoride may cause neurotoxicity in animals, models, and acute fluoride poisoning causes neurotoxicity in adults, very little is known of its effects on children's neurodevelopment. 26 of the 27 in studies were very consistent. Fluoride crosses a placenta. Fluoride exposure to the developing brain may possibly lead to damage of a permanent nature. Now, here's an example of it. The whole IQ spectrum moves over it. You have a third as many of the high IQ, three times as many of the mentally retarded. The Pew charitable trust, CDC employee is now working there, they say, well, the Choi study does not raise valid concerns about water fluoridation. My comment is, neurotoxicity is valid concern. Pew says, number one, given very small IQ difference. And when I saw that, I go, it wasn't .45. I've read these studies, they were five to 10 IQ point drop, not .45. Well, that's because Pew never read the studies. The Harvard's new School of Health newsletter said seven IQ points. That's more like it. I'll let you read that in your spare time, or get your spouse to read it for you. Pew also said unusually high natural fluoride levels. Hang on, one of the studies was at the similar level to what you're adding fluoride to the water. Four of the studies were 1.8 to 2. 12 studies right around, above the EPA mark. I'll continue. They said it was individual children, were not measured. They were doing blood and urine samples. They rejected 26 studies based, Pew rejects it, based on one animal study. Which would you rather have? This graph is very important. Back in 1950, 10% of the children had dental fluorosis, a sign of toxic excess fluoride ingestion. Now we have 41%. That shows that we're getting fluoride from many sources, and 41% of children are getting too much fluoride. Very, very important. This graph here ranks the states of the United States in the ascending order of the percentage of the whole population fluoridated. In other words, the ones on the left, they don't fluoridate hardly at all. The ones on the right, most everybody's fluoridated. When you rank that, and you look at the percentage of children that are mentally retarded, all government data, you find there's a tripling of mental retardation in fluoridated areas in the states. The same is what the Choi study said. And that's because we're getting fluoride from many different sources. We're getting too much fluoride from many sources. It's happening in the United States. Now, according to Murray study that I said before, there's roughly $1,000 today's value, $1,000 negative economic impact for every IQ drop. That means of the 200 million people in the United States, we're looking at about 1.2, no, 7 times 7 is 14, 1.4 trillion dollars per year negative economic damage, if this is correct of the Choi studies, these human studies, and these studies. Come on, let's keep going here. Increased lead blood levels, especially for blacks, Mexicans, and even whites on this, and there's more data on that. Mother's milk, this kind of decay that they show you, it is a tragedy, but it's not, fluoridation does not prevent this kind of bottle carries. This is some examples of the expenses and problems of dental fluorosis that I treat, increased tooth fracture. Here's a very important one. When we compare the 50 states again, we can see the top line is the percentage of reported very good to excellent health. You can see that on the wealthy, it's 82% roughly all the way across. Makes no difference how much fluoride they're getting in the community. When we compare the poor, we see about 55% have very good to excellent teeth. Again, fluoridation has no common cause. It doesn't make any difference whether you're fluoridated or not, but income does. This graph is an expanded one of what you'll find on the CDC. From 1930 to 1990, in 1935, year olds had about 11 cavities per child. Now it's down to about one and a half cavities per child.
Excuse me, but your time is up.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, doctor. Appreciate your time and brief presentation. Lise?
That's G.A.U.N.T. I'm a pediatrician. I've been in practice for 40 years. I'm one of the founding members of Renton Pediatric Associates. We have seven pediatricians, two nurse practitioners, and over the years, we've taken care of thousands of Renton children. In 1984, I joined with some other citizens from Renton, the Farmers Citizens Committee for Fluoridation, and we had the opportunity to educate the community and the benefits and the safety of the fluoridation. And we're very pleased when the city passed the recommendation to fluoridate the water. So I've seen children in Renton, both before we fluoridated and since we've fluoridated. And during that time, I have not seen a significant problem with dental fluorosis. I have seen some general improvement in dental health. It's true that fluoridation doesn't take care of all of the problems, but in general, we've seen some definite improvement. I'd like to be available to answer questions later, but I want to turn it over now to the dentist, Dr. Burgess.
Hi, I'm Moffett Burgess. I'm, my background is as a scientist in molecular biology. I now am the dental director for Public Health Seattle in King County, and a practicing dentist. I work mainly with low-income kids in Columbia City, and see firsthand the benefits of prevention. Oh, no. Close. Thanks. Okay. Thank you. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC identifies community water fluoridation as one of the 10 great public health achievements of the 20th century. Fluoridation prevents tooth decay safely and effectively. The public health community, those that devote their career to serving the public health, strongly supports water fluoridation. And I really appreciate the opportunity to come talk with you, and mostly really want to thank you for your leadership and for providing this type of water to the citizens of Renton. It affects and improves the lives regardless of income and race and ethnicity and challenges that the citizens may have. I really commend you. So, most public water systems in America are fluoridated. The Renton residents are amongst the 205 million Americans who receive fluoridated water. The practice of fluoridating water, as you heard, started in the 40s and has been proven effective to prevent cavities by 25 to 40%. Fluoridation is what city leaders do when they care about their populations. It is making a difference in the citizens of residents. It's effective, it's safe, and as you heard, it's legal. Fluoride, what is fluoridate? Fluoride, what is fluoride? It's a naturally occurring element. It is the 13th most abundant element on Earth. It is everywhere. It's in the, you know, it's in the soil, in the rocks, in the oceans. Oceans are slightly more fluoridated than drinking water. It gets into the food and to drinks just in... It's because it's so common. Life on Earth has developed with fluoride as a mineral that's very common. So, and so why do we fluoridate water? Fluoride is truly amazing. It is an ion that gets incorporated into the surface of the enamel. It actually makes the teeth stronger, makes them much more resistant to decay. And as a dentist, it's very exciting to have something that simple be able to make the teeth that much stronger. So, what's the problem that we're trying to address? Tooth decay. As a practicing dentist, I see kids very routinely that have had their lives strongly affected by dental decay. It's super common for kids to have to go under general anesthesia, be hospitalized for dental care. And I've heard countless stories from adults who basically tell me that their teeth have ruined their lives. It's very challenging. I don't know how many of you have had a toothache from dental decay. I have. And you really aren't functioning at a high level when you have that level of pain. So, the problem that we're addressing is big, and the amount... The importance of prevention cannot be overestimated. So, how common is it? In Washington and in King County, it's between 40 and 49% of kindergarteners and third graders have already had cavities. Community water in King County reaches about 80% of the residents. Statewide, it's lower. It's about 65% of residents. So, you can see that that is also reflected, correlates with the amount of cavities that kids get. In King County, it's 40%. We have a higher percentage of kids getting fluoridated water. In Washington state overall, it's 49%. Fluoride, it makes a difference. So, it... Fluoridation addresses disparities. The people who need it most, those who are more likely to have decay, probably to no one's surprise, are those who are non-white, lower income, non-English speaking. Renton is becoming more diverse. I think over the last 10, 15 years, it's really obvious. And tooth decay is common in all kids, but in Renton kids, it's going to be quite a burden. And it makes an even more compelling argument to maintain fluoridation of the water. Water fluoridation is a public health measure that makes common sense for everyone while helping the people who need it most. It lowers decay rates. It lowers healthcare costs. And it does not require that people have access to dental care in order to benefit. Times are tough. There are a lot of people out there who don't have access to dental care, but they do have access to tap water. Fluoridation is... It's also remarkable. It impresses me because it doesn't require a behavioral change to make a difference. I'm constantly, you know, I'm a dentist. I'm constantly harping on people about behavior change, but it's this level, 25 to 40% less cavities. It happens without me having or other health professionals having to convince people to make a change in their lifestyle. You can be very proud that you are helping members of your community. So, as I mentioned, fluoridated communities do have less decay, and it saves money. Every dollar invested in water fluoridation saves around $40 in dental care. And for me, treating mainly young kids, it saves a lot of just having to go through that as a kid, multiple appointments. It's just whenever we can prevent something, it's not just money. It's also the kind of heartache of it. And kids who have strong teeth, that benefit lasts a lifetime. When I see adults who haven't had problems with their teeth, they have a much different outlook on dentists than those who have had... Every time they go to the dentist, they end up with, you know, having to come back for root canals, crowns, et cetera. It's a big thing in people's lives. So, the benefits last a lifetime. Is it safe? How do we know it's safe? It has been around for 65 years. Most citizens are drinking water, and it is one of the most studied public health measures ever. 3,000 studies have been done on fluoride to prove... To confirm that it's safe. But what's listed here on the slide is just some recent... Large body of recent reviews of all that data showing that it is supportive, it is effective, and it is safe. The EPA, Department of Health and Human Services, CDC, they all continue to support fluoridation and believe that it improves health. Renton is in compliance. Its tap water is, as you heard, carefully monitored. It is safe for consumption, and it improves health. Reported sensitivities and allergies are very likely the result of other components of fluoride-containing products and not from the fluoride ion because the ion is present everywhere. So, one of the things you've heard about is fluorosis. It's a common fear around fluoridating water that will cause fluorosis. Fluorosis is, in its most common form, a cosmetic effect that typically causes teeth to have little white streaks and white spots. And those teeth are actually stronger than teeth without fluorosis. At levels much higher than that found in the drinking water, it can have an effect causing brown spots. I think if you can see this, if it comes through the moderate and the severe forms, you would not expect from levels of fluoride in the water. You can see there's sort of some darkening streaks and modeling. And in my practice, we do see this form. And when I see that patients with this form of fluorosis, I sort of play a game with it, and I ask... I try to guess what city they're from, and they're not from the United States. There's two cities that we see that have the severe forms. The one that's most common is Durango, Mexico, and the second most common is a refugee camp outside of Ethiopia. And so, we do see it. I understand the concern, but it isn't going to result from water fluoridation. The other thing about fluorosis is just that it's a catch-all term, that any change in enamel that results in sort of a chalky white spot is called fluorosis. But we don't know, looking at the teeth, whether or not it's caused by fluoride. Other things do affect the developing enamel. We know antibiotics for sure, high fevers for sure. So, there's... If you want to... There's a lot of ways to debate fluorosis, and that's one factor to keep in mind. It describes a range of cosmetic changes. It occurs if too much fluoride is swallowed. Primary cause for that in Renton and in the US would be from toddlers swallowing too much fluoridated toothpaste. It only occurs while teeth are developing, and it occurs in communities that have water fluoridation and those that don't. So, you're not going to eliminate fluorosis by taking fluoride out of the water. So, fluoridation is a balanced approach. As you increase the fluoride concentration in water, the decay rate goes down. And that's what we're looking for. We're looking for a good, solid reduction in decay. The other thing that happens as the fluoride concentration goes up is that you get enamel fluorosis at high levels. So, the Health and Human Services proposal is to keep it right at the sweet spot where you're really doing a lot to impact health, and you're only impacting the cosmetic concerns in a very small amount. So, it... And that's one of the reasons why it's so studied is because there's the sweet spot. You really want to know what's the perfect level of fluoride. And so, research is ongoing. It's an active area. It isn't something that was designed in the 40s and never looked at again. I'm proud that there are so many active studies of fluoride. So, fluoridation is the adjustment and monitoring, as you've heard, of fluoride in the drinking water to ensure that it stays at a desired level. In communities in the US where the natural fluoride in the water is over four parts per million, those drinking waters above... The sources of water above four parts per million are not considered good tap water. So, systems with higher than that have to lower the fluoride to four parts per million. It's .8 parts per million in Renton. And so, the concentration in Renton, we're kind of lucky in that we're in an easy situation to optimize the fluoride level. Sources of fluoride, drinking water is at between .7 and 1.2 parts per million. If it goes above four, that's not allowed. Ocean water, as I mentioned, is about one part per million. Fluoride toothpaste, 1,500 times that. Fluoride rinses, fluoride treatments, and fluoride supplements are other sources of fluoride. Community water fluoridation, the water in Renton meets the standards of health, does not cause aesthetic cosmetic effect, and is... You can be sure. It is really benefiting the citizens of Renton. It works. 3,000 studies. It's 25 to 40%, depending on the population studied, reduction in decay. Thousands of kids in Renton are not having to undergo dental procedures because the water is good. It's endorsed by the major medical health organizations, US Public Health Service, the AMA, ADA, World Health Organization, International Association for Dental Research, American Water Works Association. Health organizations have looked at it and support water fluoridation. It's common in the US. Most of residents drink fluoridated water, and Renton is among those. As you heard earlier, it started in '87 and is legal to fluoridate water. Keep water fluoridation in Renton. It's effective, it's safe, it's legal. I think, yeah, I guess I just... I just truly, I realize that city councils have this ability, and I just truly, truly want to thank you. It's helping. It really is. And I think that's it.
Perfectly timed. Thank you, doctor.
Thank you.
Lise, do you need anything closing, or just go to questions? Or... Questions from council? Randy. Randy.
Yeah, so I've got some. For the second speaker, if I may. Okay, so, the first question would be, "In preparation for tonight's discussion, I followed a link that had been given to me by the Utilities Committee to the CDC website on oral health. And it had a link which said, 'Safety,' and I clicked on it, and it took me to a 2006 study by the, if I remember right, the National Research Council, part of the National Academy of Science. The EPA had encouraged or backed the study. And I'm really intrigued by your comment that there's no health concerns because I actually took a look at that 530-page document. And in it, the scientists, the panel that was working on behalf of CDC and the EPA concluded that there were a great deal of areas that needed to be studied further. And I'm curious, have you looked at that study? What do you have to say about that?
Thank you. Yeah, I had an opportunity when the EPA and the HHS released the change in fluoride from .8 to .7 to look into, because that was part of what it was based on, that big study, to look into the research. And I think you're... In those types of situations where you've got 3,000 studies and you've got other caveats to each of them, those authors are going to suggest more research is necessary in certain areas. I think because of the volume, you would get a lot of indication that there should be more research. And of course, we would always support knowing as much as possible. But the fact that they're suggesting more research is necessary is different than suggesting, based on the evidence, we should stop it or that it does cause these things. They just want to make sure that it's safe by doing more research, you know? And of course, we should respond if the research shows differently.
But your comment, "They just want to make sure that it's safe," and then stating in your papers that there's no health concerns. I mean, it seems like it's in conflict to me. I saw 100 recommendations in there for different studies, for everything from Down Syndrome to Alzheimer's to this effect of seven points reduction in IQ to kidney stones, to bladder cancer, uterine cancer, diabetes, and the National Academy...
You really did do your research.
Yeah, the National Academy of Science said every one of those should be studied further. And they said some of them are very difficult to study, that we have to rely on studies in other countries in large part because so much of our population is already... Receiving fluoride is hard to get study categories. But still, for you to just sort of say, "No health concerns," when that 2006 panel that had been chartered by the CDC and EPA said there were 100 more studies at least necessary. I'm just curious.
I don't disagree with that more studies are necessary, but they did not come out and say that these health concerns warrant changing the water fluoridation. So, but more studies are necessary.
Well, in fact, they did, and we lowered our standard, but they still thought the studies were necessary.
Okay. Well, I'd like to add one thing. In the field of medicine, we love to do research. And I can't think of a single type of problem that they don't recommend continuing to do more research. We're finding new things out all of the time. But the point that Dr. Burgess made earlier is that fluoridation has been studied probably more than almost any other medicine, so to speak, with 3,000 studies. And we have not found any proof that it causes any damage. And so, that's reassuring. But we're going to keep looking. For the present time, our recommendation is it's safe, it's effective, it helps, and it's cheap.
Okay. I had another one, if I may. Yeah, it's just, it's smaller than... Certainly doesn't rise to concerns like Alzheimer's and cancer. But you have in your charts a statement that is just... It's kind of unsupported. "Sensitivity slash allergy to fluoride products such as toothpaste or fluoride treatment are from the other components in the product and not from the fluoride."
Yeah.
I just have to say, I think that's an unsupported statement in as much as, in that 530-page document, there was reference to a double-blind study, one of the few actual double-blind studies that have been conducted using bottled water with fluoride. And the group of subjects that received the bottles with the fluoride, they didn't know who they were. Their doctors didn't know who they were. But they reported gastro... I mean, they reported gastrointestinal issues at a higher rate than the non-fluoridated ones. And, you know, there was no indication in the study that that was something else in the water. I mean, they... Scientists had produced the bottled water specifically to study that. So, I'm curious about... Do you really feel confident when you make that statement?
I do feel confident, and it references more what I see when people have reactions to toothpaste. It's most commonly the SDS, the surfactant in it. So, that's not directly addressing the concern that you raised. I just wanted to say where that statement comes from is that I do see people who have reactions to toothpaste, to fluoride tray.
So, they may be having reactions to other items.
Yes.
I agree with that.
So, that's where that statement comes from. I don't know of the specific research study that it was double-blinded and showed a gastric effect. I'm interested in looking into it, and as a scientist, I want to know the truth. I'm not interested in whitewashing the subject.
Okay. And I'm not trying to pick on you. One final one, just a little comment when presented, and I'm becoming more... As I've read studies on this, both sides, by the way, and I've been very... Tried to be very discerning. All my life, I've supported fluoride. For 19 years, I've been part of this council, and we've been fluoridating water. But I've been very interested recently, especially with the 2006 study. The last item I just wanted to mention is... It says fluoride is a naturally occurring mineral, which I agree is true. And the 13th most abundant element. I think from a science standpoint, we've sort of mixed two things. I think the element is fluorine. Fluoride's a compound fluorine forms with. I don't really know if fluor... You know, I don't think we want to tell people that fluoride is the 13th most abundant element when fluorine is. Fluorine ends up in all sorts of things, shellfish, and our bodies use a little bit of fluorine in our teeth. Fluoride is an ion. I think it's a little bit like comparing oxygen, which we all love and use all the time, to ozone. You know, so one couldn't say, "Well, ozone is one of the most common elements" when we know that oxygen in its benign form is very common, but ozone's different. So, anyways, with that, I thank you.
I appreciate it.
Any other council members? Hearing none, I propose for passing next week a committee report that reads, "The committee of the hall has heard presentations on the subject of fluoridation in the city's water supply and recommends that the referral be closed." Again, we'd go out in unfinished business next week. With that, committee of the hall is adjourned.